I just received a message, there's no sound. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there's no what?
It was on mute.
No audio.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, then I want to just make my announcement that I made up front one more time for those listening in. I know there are a lot of comments and opinions on what took place at Planning Commission two weeks ago. I also know that the appointment of Chair and Vice Chair of Planning Commission took place prematurely. I would like to make residents aware that the Planning Commission Chair will call for a renomination of Chair and Vice Chair to their commission at their next meeting. So, okay, now we're ready for a public comment.
Paul Stern, okay, that's better, okay. Paul Stern, 2527 Deer Run Drive. The comments I have tonight originally started off with the meeting minutes from the last meeting. During a review of the meeting minutes from the City Council meeting of 12 Jan 21, I noticed a minor inconsistency with the emphasis of the text that was not included in the minutes. Request that a minor adjustment be made to the 12 Jan 21 meeting minutes to clarify the intent of the original comment as shown in the last paragraph of this presentation. The second paragraph that I have in this presentation is what I presented on the 12th of January. And the third paragraph is my comments. The text that's in Times New Roman came directly from the minutes. What I'd like to add is what I have in bold and underlined, attached, enforced on that portion of the loss development. A copy of the existing slash applicable CCNRs, covenant conditions and restrictions should be included with the plot plans filed in the Davis Recorder's Office for Deer Run Estates. The actual reason I added this is because it was not clear as the text written in the minutes and the fact that it should be attached and enforced and the fact that they are located in the Davis County Recorder's Office. The way it was written, it could have been interpreted that we wanted it filed with the loss and that wasn't the case. It's just the fact that the one lot that used to be in Deer Run Estates, well, it's still in Deer Run Estates development, should have the CCNRs applied to that parcel and that building. In the actual, I mean, in the text, it said lots buildings. And that may or may not be applicable, but it's just the first building that's on the corner of Deer Run and the Frontage Road. And then I have an added comment which could actually be included in this meeting. These CCNRs use, should be used as a source during the plan reviews for the loss by staff, Planning Commission and the City Council. Thank you. And oh, by the way, it's nice to be back.
Thank you, Paul.
Corinne Johnson, 8020 South, 2500 East, South Weaver. Mayor and Council, I wanted to add my voice to the public record on the unfortunate state of the Planning Commission in South Weaver and ask for steps to be taken to make changes not only to who sits on the Planning Commission, but the form and function of the commission. These issues are not new, but the recent actions at the PC meeting on Thursday the 14th have brought up the glaring reality that until drastic changes to the Planning Commission are made, the city is going to continue to push against the actions of the commission. Actions which have proved time and time again to go against the general plan, recommendations of the City Council, legal council and the voice of engaged citizens. It saddens me that because of a lack of responsiveness and leadership on the part of Mayor Joe, this decision is being forced into a public meeting where the service of good men who have dedicated their time and knowledge to our community is being publicly scrutinized. This is not what any of us want, but it is clear change needs to be made and if this is how it has to be done, then so be it. As an engaged citizen, I have attended and watched nearly every PC meeting over the last 18 months. I've been saddened, frustrated and at times shocked by the behavior and leadership of Commissioner Osborne and have repeatedly asked for him to be removed for clear violations of code and conduct befitting a PC member. I am asking on public record that he be removed from the Planning Commission. I also feel strongly that Commissioner Walton's recommendation to serve another additional five-year term is not in the best interest of the citizens of South Weaver. Commissioner Walton has done a great service for our city. My thoughts on this do not reflect at all on his service as a PC member, but rather the fact that it does not benefit the community to have him serve an additional five years when there are other citizens who are willing and wanting to serve on the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, I feel the recommendation of the mayor to reappoint Commissioner Walton shows that she does not fully understand the depths of distrust, frustration and concern South Weaver citizens have with the Planning Commission. Our pleas for change have fallen on deaf ears for months and have put us in a position of having to fight and push for change rather than that change being welcomed. As for the Planning Commission itself, I agree with our own city code and the research and recommendations of Joel Dills that the commission needs to be varied and represent a wide cross-section of citizens in the community. Expanding the commission to seven members would ensure that variation and it would also ensure that not one perspective or opinion becomes dominant in the actions of the council or commission. Shorter terms, three years at most, will also ensure that the commission continues to remain responsive to the concerns and the desires of the citizens. I know each of you work tirelessly for the city and that each of you care about it deeply. Thank you for your continued service and your dedication. Thank you for taking action tonight. Action that is needed to strengthen the community of South Weaver, rebuild trust and help our community continue to prosper. Thank you, Corinne.
So I'm Gary Boatwright, 579 Pearson Parkway. I am also a member of the Planning Commission. I know that some feel that the actions taken in the last Planning Commission meeting was meant to circumvent the process and keep things as they are. I don't believe that. Was it a mistake to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair at that meeting? Yes. Is it something we can correct? Yes. I am disappointed that no one on the commission, including myself, noted that the process to appoint a member of the commission was still in process. It completely slipped my mind and for that I apologize. There's also objections raised about the commission entertaining a proposal from a property owner for a change in zoning. While I personally raised a concern about this, a property owner has a right to petition for a zone change. It may or may not be seriously considered, but it is a right and I believe the city should respectfully hear any proposal by a property owner. There was a comment that stood out in the second general plan survey. Paraphrasing the resident, paraphrasing, the resident stated, "I wish people would quit telling me what I can do with my land." Though some may disagree with what our neighbors want to do with their property, communication always leads to better solutions. I believe there is a misunderstanding of the role of the Planning Commission. Our role is really limited to recommending, not approving. I direct you to section 10-3-5 in the city code. The Planning Commission recommends and advises. The City Council approves, amends or rejects recommendations by the Planning Commission. There is very little the Planning Commission has authority to approve. The real authority rests with the City Council. Serving on the Planning Commission this past year has opened my eyes to a side of South Weaver I never knew existed. I appreciate the interest of the community and their willingness to participate and provide feedback regarding civic affairs. When I served on the commission in Riverdale, we yearned for members of the community to come to our meetings. Rarely did that happen. Here, there are few meetings that go without any public comment. I'm grateful for public comment and always welcome feedback and insight from our neighbors and friends. During the past 12 months, I have also learned that no one, the mayor, City Council, staff, Planning Commission members can do anything without being criticized. I experienced this immediately after my first or second meeting as a new Planning Commissioner. A resident approached me and asked me how I felt regarding a specific topic. Not knowing all the issues, I said that I'm not totally sure if I believe what he explained, but stated I would look into it further. Hearing that answer, the resident stated I would be hearing from many people, which I welcome. That same evening, I found myself being attacked on social media for the comment I made. This resident made several statements and assumptions that were and continue to be false. I'm grateful that Corinne and others removed the post. After dealing with inaccurate assumptions and accusations on social media and through email time and time again in just this last year, the thought of resigning has crossed my mind several times. I know others on the commission have been dealing with this for much longer than I have. Despite the many accusations to the contrary, I have no agenda, nor am I seeking authority or power. I applied to be on the commission for two reasons. One, to serve my community and two, to get to know more people in South Weaver since I'm a new resident. I enjoy serving most of the time and I am thankful for the people I have gotten to know. I do my best to represent the values of the citizens of South Weaver and the Planning Commission should represent the values of all citizens. But as a citizen myself, I have my own opinions as well. Though my time on the commission has been short, I know that no one on the City Council or Planning Commission is doing this for personal gain or notoriety. And despite the many allegations made on social media, none of us are lining our pockets with money from developers. I know everyone on the Planning Commission and City Council has a sincere desire and willingness to serve the community we all live in and love. I am disappointed with the assumptions, negative remarks and even personal attacks that we have all seen during this past year and in the years before that. Seeing neighbors attack each other on social media is alarming and does not represent the values the community holds dear. Serving on the Planning Commission has been interesting. I've appreciated getting to know many people in the community and I look forward to continue service this year and beyond. I hope and pray that we, community officials and citizens of South Weaver, can have more patience, understanding and a willingness to treat each other as friends and neighbors because that is who we are. We may not always agree with each other and that's okay. Differences of opinion and healthy dialogue bring about better solutions. Personal attacks and constant criticism divides, breeds discord and ends friendships. And I don't think that's what any of us want for South Weaver. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. All right. And thanks to those who submitted a public comment online. Is there any more public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to our Davis County Sheriff's Quarterly Report. Sergeant Pope has been gathering data and statistics of significant events within our community and is here to present the information.
All right, good evening. I wish it was not every quarter that we could meet and talk, but we'll do that in between, how about that? So the last one that we did was September 8th, I believe, and that was a very long one. This one should be much less lengthy. This one was only from September 9th to January 25th, so if you want to go ahead and turn that. My introduction again, I'm Sergeant Pope. I've been with a paramedic for 20 years. I've been a law enforcement officer and served at the sheriff's office for 14. I've been assigned to be in charge of South Weaver and cover everything that you guys need. And from there, I've become the administrative sergeant, so I'm actually down at our office most of the time, but I still read up on you guys all the time and keep up with you. If you want to go ahead and click the next one there, if you want to click the underlined. So this is a list of the hours the deputies keep in their daily logs each week. And if you want to, I don't know if you can zoom in just a little bit there. There we go. So down near the bottom, there's a total, we have the total of day hours and the total of night hours. And then I have averages of both. So we average 68.4 hours during the day a week and 47 hours during the night a week. And altogether, that's about 115 hours a week that we spend in, excuse me, in South Weaver. That's actually pretty good. I wanted it to get above 100 at one point and 115 is way above my expectations. So we're getting quite a lot and there are a few deputies that I know of that specifically patrol South Weaver and we'll see that as these next slides continue. When we get the events, you'll see names that'll kind of reoccur over and over. If you want to scroll down just a little bit further. During those three months, three, three and a half months, we had 1,020 calls that we responded or self-initiated. 24 arrests during that time, 221 traffic stops with 78 citations, 118 violations on those citations, 25 radar enforcements and two DUIs. And at the bottom corner in the left there, I put 59.08% of those calls are self-initiated. So that means our deputies are actually in the city and they are actually initiating the contact, whether it's a traffic stop, whether it's making contact with a citizen. We have a thing that we call COP. It's a community-oriented policing event and that's usually where we'll get out and sometimes we play basketball with the kids. Sometimes we just get out and talk. We do bicycle education, that type of stuff. So that's what that would be considered under. And there were 30 winter parking citations for that. I know that can be kind of irritating sometimes, but at the same time, the reason that we uphold winter parking at this point is because it makes it very difficult for snow removal if you're parked on the roadway, especially in cul-de-sacs. That's one of our biggest issues that we've had over the years. So just, I'll throw a reminder out there to everyone to remember not to park between the hours of midnight to noon. It's a little bit later in the day than most others, but then we get a lot of wind and things in South Weaver and it helps us to clear out the snow. The way I got those 59.08% is through these stats right here. And this is through Spillman. We have a computer program that's CAD, computer-aided dispatch. And these are all the calls. On the right, you'll see which percentage of all of our calls that call takes up. And collecting all the ones that are self-initiated is how I came to that percentage. So there's quite a long list, as you can see. It's, I think, two pages, actually three pages. So that's where we get our 1,000 calls as well. Perfect. Okay, if you want to switch to the next slide there. Okay, our fun time, the significant events. All right. On September 17th, as there was a suspicious or psychiatric problem, we received a call about a female walking door-to-door asking for money and a ride. While in the area, the female walked to another house and sat on the couch within the homeowner's house. The homeowner was able to contact family who came over and the female left the residence was located running towards 675 East. The female was identified and pink-sheeted, which is when we have someone go for a mental commitment into the hospital so that they get the help that they can receive, that they need to receive due to schizophrenic behavior and which she has a history of. So that one actually kind of started strange, but ended up pretty well. On September 18th, we had a suspicious drug offense. Leighton City Fire Captain called his dispatch via his radio to report a naked male in the neighborhood knocking on doors and asking for help and telling people he was going to die. The male reportedly became aggressive prior to our arrival. Deputies arrived and advised the male was unknown to any residents and had been hiding by a fence at the residence. The deputies found the front door of the residence open, items knocked on the floor and raised voices coming from the basement. They entered and found the male still naked and repeating, "I'm going to die." He was identified and transported to Oxford Regional for medical help and another mental evaluation. While in the residence, the odor of marijuana was observed along with several items of controlled substances. A search warrant was gained, a large quantity of marijuana dabs, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with dabs. Dabs is kind of a gel liquidy form of THC. It almost looks like earwax. Paraphernalia and $8,500 in cash were seized. On September 22nd, there were a few vehicle burglaries, several vehicle burglaries on the K-lane area of South Weaver. All vehicles appear to have been unlocked with property having been gone through. One of the victims had a purse taken with several credit cards. Those cards were used at a Maverick in Leighton and Smiths in Salt Lake City. The assigned deputy is conducting follow-up on that case. On September 3rd, there was an evading. Deputy Jeffries attempted to stop a black sedan that failed to yield on South Weaver Drive. This has kind of been a continuing thing each time I come up and present. It seems like we have several people who evade, and I don't think they're citizens in the city. I think they're coming through. But Deputy Jeffries notified dispatch the vehicle was evading, and he stopped pursuing. Several agencies, including Leighton and Clearfield, observed the vehicle as it continued west and south through their cities. Leighton was able to identify the vehicle as a 2,000 black Audi A4 with a front and side passenger damage. September 25th, domestic deputies responded to a domestic assault at the residence. During an argument, a male punched his son-in-law in the face, causing him to fall down the stairs. This occurred in front of the victim's three-year-old child. The suspect was booked into the jail for DB assault in the presence of a child. September 23rd, had a recovered stolen vehicle. Citizen called to report a vehicle burglary at the above location. It was reported that two males were seen going through and taking items from a Mercedes SUV, and then got into a silver Ford F-150 and fled the area towards IE4. The males were described to be in their 30s to 40s with tattoos. One was wearing a Miami jersey. Upon arrival, it was found that the Mercedes SUV was listed NCIC as a stolen vehicle. It's a National Criminal Information Data that we use throughout the whole country. And it was out of Cottonwood Heights, and it did not belong in the area. Several items of evidentiary value were noted inside. The crime lab processed the vehicle and further follow-ups being pending with detectives. And they are still looking into that and coinciding with Cottonwood Heights PD. October 3rd, there are suicide threats. A female at a residence grabbed knives from the kitchen, attempting to cut her wrists. Her husband was able to take multiple knives from her. This is a recent onset of psychiatric problems with her, according to her husband. He has been frustrated with resources for mental health. The female was transported for a mental health evaluation. Deputy stayed on scene and gave resources for mental health to the husband. And I'll give this one a shout out as well. If there's anyone in the city that has this type of situation, go on, and you don't know what resources you can get, please call us. We have those resources. We can get you those resources. Last time, I talked about our receiving center that we have, and that is a huge resource that is available 24 hours a day. So if anyone has any issues with that, please contact us. Let us know. We'll gladly come out. On October 10th, there was a theft. It was reported that Deputy Reed, Deputy Reed, that there were thefts of Halloween decor. This happened over the next couple of days. It had occurred in South Weaver earlier in the day. One in particular that had been caught by someone by their home security. This provided the description of a female suspect and the vehicle she was in. We recalled the same area where homeowners had been awakened by their doorbell and saw that a female was taking their Halloween decoration from their yard. Several homeowners boxed the suspect in her vehicle and called 911. The suspect was identified and matched a description from an earlier theft of Halloween decorations. She admitted to being in the same area earlier and that she had traded something for the items. Charges were filed for the items that were taken and restitution requested. Some of the decorations were found the next day and returned to owners. So she had actually stashed them in a different location and said she sold them. So we got a few of them back, some of them not. And so she's being charged and asked for restitution. Another evading on November 15th. The deputy initiated a traffic stop on a vehicle leaving the Mavericks in South Weaver. The vehicle initially yielded to, and the driver was identified. During the traffic stop, a K-9 deputy responded, and K-9 Reno performed a sniff of the vehicle. While performing this, the driver aggressively turned the wheel and accelerated, nearly hit a deputy and the K-9 with his flight from the scene. Deputies initiated a pursuit on the vehicle. The watch commander requested the pursuit terminate as the driver was performing erratically, which is not uncommon. The pursuit was picked up by Highway Patrol after they had found the vehicle, and it was spiked. It then continued until it ran off the road on 500 South and Legacy. Deputies continued to the scene and took the driver into custody. He had been seen throwing items out of the vehicle, which were later collected and identified as large bags. Marijuana, methamphetamine, and paraphernalia were found in the vehicle. And mind you, this started at the Maverick in our own city. So I know there are several deputies who watch Maverick and the entrance to our city with great, great concerns. So it's being watched. November 20th, child abuse. Mother received her six-year-old son from the father in South Weaver. The mother noticed bruising to the child's cheek and chin. The child informed her that the father grabbed his face and thrown him to the ground in discipline for hitting his sibling. The child's with the mother for the time being. DCFS, the detectives interviewed both the child and the father. A search warrant was served at the residence, and the suspect rested for child abuse. November 25th, deputies responded to the report of altercation called in from a neighbor who could hear yelling and slamming sounds within the home. Upon the arrival of the deputies, the same sounds could be heard, and contact was made with parties inside. It was determined that a male resident had been the primary aggressor, assaulted, choked, spit on, and prevented the victim from calling 911 for help. The suspect was booked into jail for assault, propelling bodily substance, and interrupting a communication device. Jail release agreement's in place, although the suspect will likely be held due to probation violation from a previous aggravated assault. December 8th, while patrolling the area for suspicious vehicle, called in as possibly stealing packages. A deputy made contact with a vehicle parked on 1900 East. Upon contact, she observed an obvious odor of marijuana. The occupants were all found to have drug paraphernalia and substance consistent with heroin use. December 27th, while conducting a routine traffic stop, Deputy Ryerson, that's one of our deputies that is very, very paying a lot of attention to the city, located a fugitive with an extraditable warrant out of Idaho, as well as drugs and paraphernalia. The individual was booked into the jail and held for the agency to come pick up from Idaho. January 5th, a victim had $3,000 fraudulently transferred from her account through Venmo after providing all of her account information and password over Snapchat to someone who had hacked her friend's account. She believed she was giving that information to a friend, and it was someone who had hacked the friend's account. The investigation led to contact with the owner of the Snapchat account, which was also hacked, and then another victim who resides in Leighton. We have detectives that are consulted and working on that case right now. January 7th, we had a theft from South Weaver Fire Station. South Weaver Fire had several equipment items stolen from their apparatus, bay, and garage. These items are reported to have been sold at a metal scrapyard in Riverdale and Ogden area. The items were located and found to have the South Weaver Fire identifier stamped on them. The return of property to South Weaver is being facilitated, and I think it's already occurred. The scrapyard has security video, camera video of the suspect and the vehicle. They're going to be collected. We currently, I believe, have some leads to who and what was taken. January 7th, suspicious welfare check. Male was contacted as a suspicious person sleeping on the ground of the church property in 1400 East South Weaver Drive. This one was called in several times throughout the day. He was found to be okay, refused help, and without violation, he was left alone. I actually spoke with the deputy who responded to that first call. He spoke with the male and tried to give him some ideas and help as to how he could go to the Lantern House or wherever he needed to go. And he refused any help that the deputy tried to give him. And so since it wasn't illegal to walk around, he was released. Later and throughout the day, received numerous calls on him wandering the entire city, being suspicious and behaving unusual. Repeat contact was made. Mr. Down did not want to talk to deputies and did not identify himself. He was later observed climbing over a fence into the landfill property with no trespassing sign clearly visible. He was taken into custody and began making statements that he wanted to die. He also stated he was hit by a car earlier and presented with an injured leg. He was ultimately pink-sheeted and transported for care at MCD. He was discovered that he is homeless, and his vehicle had been impounded in Riverdale, leaving him to arrange his own transportation from the area. So these are, these are things that we try to help people out as much as we can. Obviously, from the first contact, he refused any of that help, but taking him to the hospital, I think the care workers there can help him out a lot more. And hopefully, he gets that. January 10th, a family disturbance shortly after day shift had dealt with the prior report of a fight between two brothers. We were again called to the residence as one brother had returned home, and the fight had continued. It was reported that one of them had brandished a gun and threatened to shoot and kill the other. A search warrant was obtained, and the house was searched with no gun found. Although meth, marijuana, and paraphernalia were found, charges were referred to the court regarding the illegal items and alleged assault. One of the males left the house for the night to stay at a motel. Further follow-up will be conducted with the Health Department due to hazardous conditions in the home. There was raw sewage in the basement. January 14th, Deputy Ryerson initiated a traffic stop, which resulted in arrest for possession of controlled substances and paraphernalia, possession of burglary tools, and possession of dangerous weapon by a restricted person. Arrest, the RSC was booked. Passenger in the vehicle was released on charges of unlawful possession of a financial transaction card. The weapon was a machete, just say no. All right, that's all the fun one. We have, we had a few things go on at the sheriff's office in the past three months. One of the biggest things that we had was we conducted a drive-through voting at the Legacy Events Center. I don't know if any of you had the privilege of going down there, but it took a lot of planning and was very successful. People were able to fill out, fill out their ballots in their car, drive-through, and give their ballots securely to voting staff. So it was very smooth and very successful, and I think it went very well. The sheriff was conducting traffic control actually on that, so we were all involved. And this last one here. As Mayor actually gave a little bit of information. COVID-19 vaccinations have started with first responders, teachers, and residents over 70. Those requesting a vaccination need to sign up on the Davis County Health Department website, and further information can be gathered there. If you have any concerns about the vaccination itself and its safety, you can get it from there. The vaccine deployment will, excuse me, will be following the drive-through style that the voting had been conducted in. And we've actually already had very successful vaccine distribution days already. And they're continuing all the way throughout the month of March is what we have scheduled already. So I personally have had both shots, and I feel very lucky. I was one that didn't have any symptoms, so... But this is not sheriff's office, but I would recommend that those who can go get them. It's obviously, like you said, there's, numbers are dropping, and I think that's part of it, so. Does anyone have any questions or any? I talked to Paul here, and he wanted a little bit of extra patrols done around his home. Is there anyone who has any other areas that we can concentrate on?
Sergeant, I did have a call from a resident today about cars on the street during storms. I know that you brought that up.
Yes.
Um, she's hoping for more enforcement.
Okay.
Instead of less.
I will mark that down, and I will get it out to our, to our division here.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And that's on your street specifically?
No, it's CFP.
Just kind of everywhere?
Around 1,500.
1,500, okay. Is there anywhere else that anyone has noticed? Yeah, at night, we are having deputies who are watching for suspicious cars because we've had that problem in the past. And when they try, excuse me, several times when they've tried to make traffic stops, the vehicles evade, and if we don't have any, any felonious aggravating factors, we don't continue a pursuit because it's too dangerous to the other citizens. So that's, that's why you'll see us terminate. But if you don't have anything else, then thank you very much. We appreciate and look forward to serving you guys so much. We love it. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much, Sergeant Pro. You went through a whole lot of information in very short amount of time.
Yes, that was. Hopefully, it was all understood.
It was, it was. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you to the Davis County Sheriff's Office for all you do for our city. We really appreciate you.
For sure.
And Sheriff Sparks, I failed to announce a sheriff was here with us tonight and want to thank him for being here with us as well. All right.
Thanks for all you guys do.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the January 12th, 2021 minutes, the December check register, and the November budget to actual. Are there comments or questions on the consent agenda? And do I have a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for January 12th, 2021 minutes, December check register, and the November budget to actual.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Can we add Paul's corrections to the, to the public feedback on that?
Well, January 12th.
Yes, Lisa.
Do you want the minutes amended, or did you want that added to this evening?
Let's amend those minutes, so it's stated there correctly. Do you want me to read what, or just get it to Michelle, or? Okay.
Okay, so the motion is with the changes, correct?
Yes.
To Paul's, Paul's statement, so, all right. Any further comment? And we'll have a real call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 And the motion carries. Next item is Resolution 21-04, Appointment to Planning Commission. Planning Commission appointments are for a five-year term. Commissioner Taylor Walton's term expired January 31st, 2021. One of my duties as mayor, grounded by City Code 1-2-2, is to appoint the open position with the advice and consent of the City Council. I am charged with selecting an individual who is willing to serve using whatever means desired and bringing that person's name forward to the City Council for their consideration. The council may approve or reject that selection. The process is repeated if the selection is rejected. A call for applications was published in December 2020. Three individuals submitted applications. I evaluated the applications and interviewed all three candidates with the assistance of City Planner Sheri Pippin and Planning Commissioner Chair Rob Osborne. Though code would allow me to do so, I do not take this recommendation lightly. I solicited applications and conducted interviews for all applicants. I wanted to bring whom I felt was the best candidate for the council to the council for recommendation. Though we had three good candidates, there was one who easily stood out among the group, according to not only myself, but all on the interview team, including Sheri Pippin, who is new to the city and was certain to have no preconceived notions. Taylor Walton has served well for the past five years. He has a considerable amount of knowledge and experience and responds well to citizens with a cool head and a calm demeanor. Taylor has been instrumental in the arduous tasks charged to the Code Committee, still early in the process of updating City Code. He has spent many hours outside of those meetings reviewing and preparing material for committee discussion. I am presenting Taylor Walton for appointment to serve a second term as Planning Commissioner. Okay, are there comments or questions from the council? All right, then do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-04, Appointment to Planning Commission to Taylor Walton?
Mayor, can I just make a comment really quick?
Sure.
So I, with, as all of us have made this, have contemplated this appointment. I keep, I keep evaluating our planning commission, and I admire and respect the people that are willing to serve on it. This was really hard because I feel like we have had many times in the last several years where perhaps the planning commission and city council haven't seen eye to eye, or things have been done that have caused some, caused some type of discord in the city. So I, I didn't take this lightly, this, this vacancy, and I feel like, I'm going to quote my dad. If we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to keep getting what we're getting. And if we continue to do what we're doing, then I would feel like I had failed the residents. And so at this time, I would not approve the recommendation.
Okay. Giadji, other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in at this time. I thank you for your patience. This hasn't been a very easy decision for any of us, especially when we know Taylor and the fine work that he's done. But I don't feel enough has been done up to this point to address the problems we're having with the planning commission, that the way they're utilized. You know, Taylor is a good and honorable man, and I've got to work with him on the Code Committee, and I got to work with him on the planning commission for a year. I want to publicly and personally thank him for his service and his hard work that he's done for five years. However, there's been times over the last five years, his views have not been consistent with the views of our public or with the general plan. I feel we need to honor the efforts of our citizens and the general plan that they've helped author. And for these reasons, and for no other reasons, I think we need to have some change on our planning commission. And I will not be voting yes. I will vote no on his appointment as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Windsor. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I don't know, as- Yeah, Mayor, I, I don't know, as Wayne has mentioned, I, I haven't been here this long, as long as he has. And I haven't seen all of the ins and outs of the planning commission. I know there's been a lot of public outcry about the process. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Windsor because basically in my mind, I wanted to know what the merits were to not approve a good candidate, a candidate who, um, by the people that went through the proper and approved process said he was the best candidate. And so it seems kind of interesting that if we have the best candidate who's available and willing, that we're going to bypass that situation. And how many other aspects of life do we do that? If we're going into surgery, if we're having a car worked on, if we have an athletic event, if we have the best person available, we don't take them? It just makes me a little bit unsure. I understand that the desire to have new blood, new people, and there's definitely merit in that. From my standpoint, it seemed like the props, the process for this has been clearly defined and followed for many years. And applicants were interviewed and an individual has been brought to us with a recommendation as being the best qualified. So from that standpoint, I, I feel no reason, no merit to reject that.
Thank you, Councilman Soderquist.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
You may.
Thank you. Um, so when I found out that the, the appointment was being decided, I actually had some concerns right off the bat of reappointing Taylor. I'm just going to speak right to you. Is that okay? Can I just look at you? Um, just, I feel that with the planning commission, it's specifically all it is, is a citizen who wants to serve and will be willing to commit to the meetings. And I feel that that's really important aspect of our planning commission. Um, it's good to have a variety of different careers and different personality types on there for that exact reason. Because they're not meant to be developers or planners or, you know, what, whatever. They're meant to just be citizens that can kind of offer that check and balance to our staff and to developers. And so I, I admire Mayor Joe for opening it up, for taking applications, for doing interviews. She doesn't need to do any of that. Um, it doesn't require her to do those, but she did and I appreciate it. But I do feel that if we are in the habit of choosing the incumbent, it will mean less people will want to apply. They'll, they'll consider that that's just what's going to happen. And on top of that, I, I had real concerns about the five-year term. I feel like it's just, it's very long. Ten years terms is, is longer than for you would have served for anyone here in this administration, the administration before it and the ministry before it as far as the council. So I definitely had my concerns there. And I know some of that might be changing here, maybe not. But I just feel that it's a good opportunity for citizens to serve. And I feel that as many people should be able to have that ability as possible. This was hard. I think everybody up here, this was really difficult. You know, this, this was two weeks ago, last Tuesday, I sent an email to the council regarding my concerns. And I've had two weeks to mull it over. And the most difficult part, Taylor, is that you're, everything that Joe said about you is exactly true. You are professional, you are respectable, you are experienced, you are all that she says, and I can't, I can't disagree with her at all on that. But I do feel that the planning commission is meant to rotate through the community as much as we possibly can. And because of that and the terms, my, my vote today will be no. But I thank you for your service very, very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Albert.
Sure. And this, this has been an interesting contemplation that I, I did not expect to have. And Quinn, I think you said it very well because I, I think this is something, and some of us will agree to disagree, is my vote tonight would have been in favor from Taylor. I think he's one of the better assets that we have on the planning commission. I think the length of terms are there for, and it's debatable. I agree that things need to be reviewed. I think when they were originally put in place, there was a reason for those length of terms. So that an individual mayor or council could not load the planning commission all by themselves. And that is the reason for the length of term. So I don't want the people to think that's why we want someone in there for 10 years. It's not. It's so, it's so that one mayor can't just come in and say, here we go, let's wipe the planning commission clean and I want my people on there. I think Taylor has been a great asset to the planning commission. I have been to every planning commission meeting since I've been on the plant, on the city council. And, and for probably a year before that. And so I think Taylor is one of the different, and I have not always agreed with Taylor on there. He comes from a, he comes at the, a view totally different than I do. I come with a view as a contractor. And Taylor comes with a totally different view. And I don't always agree, but I think that's the point of the planning commission. And I think it's a, it's our responsibility to support. There was a group of people that were put out there to interview the candidates and bring the best candidate back. And I believe that's what was done. And I would, I would support the mayor in that selection. I would also support if it could be entertained that it would be for a shorter period. I don't know if that's even possible. But from the sounds of it, that may not be a, that may be a mute point. So anyway, that would be my opinion. And I, I, I don't envy the next decision that whoever the future mayor is gets to make because you're setting the precedence.
Thank you, Councilmember Hallerston. I just want to state that, you know, there's been a lot said on the subject. I perform my duties to the, the very best of my ability. I went above and beyond what was asked of a mayor. And I felt like my position was to choose the candidate that I felt would help the city to move forward the best. Who, who was best qualified for that. And, and Taylor completely stood out from the other two and I, and the other two were great. But I couldn't in good conscience change my decision because wanted new blood or, or anything of that nature. And so that is my position and I, and I don't regret the decision I made. I also want to say that there are changes being made in the city. And we, we have a new city planner, Sherri, and I think she is incredible. I think she's going to really move the, the city forward in a positive direction. We, we got a new city, we got a new planning commissioner last year, Gary Boatright, and he has been awesome. And we have the opportunity once every year to choose to retain or get a new planning commissioner. So I would like to argue that there have been changes made in that respect. And so I just wanted to add that. Um, I believe we do need an official vote. Oh, yes, Dave.
Yeah, just, just a process clarification point so that everybody understands. The vote is very clear that the current sitting member, which is Taylor, will serve until replaced. So if the vote tonight is no, he will continue to serve until a replacement is made. Not because of that, but also another piece of information to keep in mind. I know it's been a question that was asked of me at one point is if there are changes to term length or other things, if this appointment is made tonight, could there be a motion that would make the appointment contingent on those types of changes? The answer is no. Those changes would have to, would have to happen before any appointment. So putting those two ideas together essentially, not, not trying to create a solution, but just so there's an understanding again, that if the, if the vote is to, to not appoint Taylor tonight, he would serve until replacement. Any changes that are made to the code, if there are changes, if that happens before the process plays out to get another appointment, then those changes would take place for that. So if the appointment was tonight, any future changes do not apply. But if the appointment is after any changes are made, those changes would apply.
Okay. All right, did that answer your question, Councilman Hallerston? Cause I think you were going to say something. Or do you have another comment?
That answered my question.
We're on the same page.
All right, is there any further comment?
I guess I just have one other one, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and again, we can see that we agree to disagree in different things. I would just ask us to pause and seriously think before we undermine our codes and processes by doing something contrary to how currently is written. You know, obviously we can all choose to vote on what the future is. But those changes haven't been made yet. And so I hope we're not setting a precedent that other things come before this body where people don't like the way the code is and the process is. And so they expect us to make changes before we make changes to the codes and process.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Soderquist. All right. Then do I have a motion to approve table or deny Resolution 21 dash 04?
I'll make the motion to approve. Sorry, let me pull it up here. To approve Resolution 21 dash 04 Appointment to the Planning Commission of Taylor Walton.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further comment? Then we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Hallerston.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
And the motion fails. All right, we'll have more discussion on that after this meeting, but for right now, we'll move on. All right, item number eight is coronavirus aid relief and economic security cares funding review. The latest COVID-19 relief bill was signed by President Trump on Sunday, December 27th, 2020. This bill extended the time to spend the CARES Act funds, but it did not include any additional funding for cities and states. On Monday, December 28th, 2020, the state of Utah extended the deadline to use CARES Act funds distributed to cities to June 30th, 2021. In anticipation of this extension, the final expenditure of our remaining CARES Act funds have not been made. With the extension, we have several options. First, send the remaining money to the county as originally planned. Or second, use the remaining money for additional eligible projects such as six new radios for fire, replace the city entrance sign by Maverick with an up-to-date sign, install new digital sign in another part of the city such as Old Fort Road and I-84, website redesign, or fire salaries and benefits in 2021. Okay. Did you want to add anything to that or we'll just open it up for comments?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit that staff would like to say before the discussion.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we've had a discussion on this with all our departments looking over the various options. And we have approximately $67,000 that remains to be, to a decision to be made on. It is the recommendation of the staff that the two expenditures be, this money be used for two specific expenditures. The first is to replace the digital sign that we have by Maverick with an up-to-date sign, which will provide more effective communication with our citizens. The new sign will look more like the screen we have in this city and not a lot of lights sitting on a black background. I think that's a very beneficial, especially with the intent of the COVID money to improve communication as we strive through this pandemic with our citizens. The second one is to spend the money for six new radios for better communication of our public safety in responding to COVID and other emergencies. Our police chief currently uses a policy of getting hand-me-down radios from other agencies in the valley. And I think it's a very appropriate expenditure. The total of these two expenditures would come to 67,661. The sign is, is 39,872. And the six radios comes to a total of 27,789. I didn't know it was going to come that close to the money we had, but when we got the quotes, that is what it is. If the, there are other things that the money could be spent on and you can discuss that tonight if you want. But that is our recommendation. And if you go with that recommendation, we will pursue with the quotes and then bring the appropriate budget amendment for the use of that money back at a later date with, as we've done with the other COVID expenditures. So that's a little background and I'll open it up to whatever you, and I can, I can respond or David can respond if you have questions or other ideas about the staff recommendation.
Can I make a quick comment? And Haley and I had a discussion yesterday? Maybe it was, I don't remember, but last couple of days, a little bit about the sign. We were going to actually ask to have it put on the public safety agenda. Cause it's been, I mean, I, I brought it up a long time ago, but it's been years or a couple of years since when the sign first went in. But there's been many questions and comments about the sign blocking the view of when you're sitting there trying to make a right-hand turn. And it is, and so before we, I want to, I think it's a great place to spend the money. But I think we need to address it, that sign, whether we can raise it to at the same time or we can pull it back a little bit at the same time. I know people donated a lot to that sign and I don't want to just get rid of the sign by any means. I think there may be some options we have, but I think it's, is it something we can appropriate? But I don't want to spend it and just have to tear it out if it, that it comes to that. Cause it is definitely a traffic issue right there. I went today before the meeting and you definitely, it is a problem.
The easy answer is yes, you could, you could allocate that. We have until the end of June to make the expenditure. I would suggest though, that the cost that Mac just presented would not include any of the costs to change it or repower if it was moved or, you know, it would cost more to move it or, or adjust it than what was quoted tonight.
Okay, thank you. And I think we can take that up as the Public Safety Committee.
I just had a question. So if we set it aside for that, can we purchase it but install, does it have to be installed by June or just purchased by June?
It has, it would have to be installed by June.
Installed by June, okay.
But we do have time, but we just want, we have the money. And so the decision is originally in December, the money was going to go to the count, to the county. And so we're bringing back these other options. And if your options are the sign, but further study to relocate or do the things you said, that's fine. We'll reserve that money for that and we'll follow up on that as staff and bring, and work through the committee as recommended. And that's will be one of the expenditures and airmark the money for that money. So that it doesn't lapse and it is accomplished before the deadline. And you could spend all the money, probably would take all the money to do a complete new installation somewhere else. But I don't, I have no idea what the moving cost would be. But as Blair said, we could use other money for that. And so the recommendation may still be the radios and the new sign will save them, will allocate the money that way, unless you want a different allocation of the money.
Can you give me those amounts one more time, please?
Okay, the sign is 39,872 to put in a new 16 millimeter. to put in a new 16-millimeter LED sign. I have pictures of it. It looks more like a TV screen than a bunch of dots on a board. And the six radios, the quote we have is 27,789 for a total of 67,661, which is right in the area of what we have remaining in the COVID, in the CARES Act relief fund.
Mayor?
Yes.
A friendly reminder that there's always an option for the council to continue this item. If you wanted to have staff find what that cost would be and do a little bit of research before the decision is made. So that we're not, if the priority is sign above radios, then we could see what that cost is. If the priority is radios first and then sign with the remainder and determine what the additional money would have to be from city funds, then, then that decision, of course, could be made tonight. But if you want additional information, you always have the option to continue an item and ask for, ask for additional information.
I would prefer to approve those two items.
Yeah, I prefer in that order. If we do all, I prefer that over, but if there's at least two radios, my concern about the sinus, logistically, can it get done by June 30th? I hate to commit to something and not, and not be able to complete it within the timeframe. So that would be my continue that second one to see if we can give them this information.
Do we know how old the radios that we currently have right now are?
Come, Fessler.
There's the man that knows.
Some days, Cole Fessler with South Weaver Fire. Yeah, so the radios that we have now, so we have two different models that we have now. We have the Apex 6000s, which were bought just over 10 years ago now. And then we have hand-me-down radios. I was able to, with a prior employment, I was able to get some radios donated from another jurisdiction from West Valley. And so they've donated almost 30 radios to our department, but free of charge. And so because our old ones were going off the network, so those ones are out of service for them. So we got their leftovers, so they're 20-plus years old on those. So there's in a radio that we have that's newer than 10. And some of these ones were bought in batches. So some of the 6000s were bought in batches because they are, obviously, as you guys can tell, are expensive. So they bought some a few different times, but the newest of those is at least 10 years old.
Okay, thank you. So I would agree that the, the radios would be a top priority and then the sign.
I, I just have the same concerns about the sign being done in time. If, if we do choose to do whatever that. The website redesign, what, what was that about? Was it?
How much?
It's just simply that CARES money can be used, again, that idea of communication. So.
Was there more that we were thinking of doing there? Didn't, did we not already allocate money for the?
Correct, we had already allocated city funds for that. So we could displace that. However, the, the cost for that project ended up coming in way under budget. Once we were able to go, the recommendation from staff was to not do that. But that's an option for sure. It's one of those, one of those options on the list.
I guess my recommendation would be for the radios and the entrance sign, unless we feel the entrance sign won't be done in time, and then I'd go to the fire salaries for 2021. But I definitely think we should keep it with the city and not send it to the county.
So I think the direction would be to, for sure.
Well, this is an action item, so.
Oh, this is an action item, okay. So do we have a motion then?
Do we need to say dollar amounts in the motion? Haley's the one that wrote them down.
I fill out motions every time I try. Okay, we're going to give it a go. Here we go. Mayor, I make an motion to approve coronavirus aid relief and economic, economic security spending to hold on, sorry. Okay, to go towards, do I need to put the dollar amount in there then?
Yes, please.
Okay, $39,872,000 towards, nope, see, I messed up already. We re, we ramp, we mind. Six new radios for $27,689 to the fire department. The second option being $39,872, $39,872 to the new setup Maverick. With the third option being towards fire salaries and benefits in 2021. If the sign cannot be
Completed.
Completed in time.
Okay.
Got to do.
You did great, thank you, Council. All right, do I have a second on that motion?
I would, no.
I did poorly.
Okay, Councilman Windsor?
I'd like to ask if the motion could be amended to ask staff to take take steps to further evaluate the sign, sign the location.
Yes.
I would go for that.
I will go for that, too.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. You have all the information on that. Hopefully, that's all on there. So any further comment? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 And the motion carries. All right, next item is a discussion item. City Code Title 10, Chapter 3, Planning Commission, Sections 3, Terms of Office and 4, Organization. City Code Section 10-3 establishes a planning commission and outlines the provisions of the commission. Members of the city council have expressed a desire to discuss specific items related to the planning commission from Sections 10-3-3, Terms of Office, and 10-3-4, Organization, to see if the council as a body would like to make any amendments. Tonight's discussion item is for the council to review these two sections and discuss potential changes to term length, number of terms one can serve, the number of annual terms a member can be selected as chair or vice chair, and the timeline, timeline for appointment and selection of chair and vice chair. Okay, comments? I know everyone's got some.
I'll start. I, I just appreciate Blair explaining where the five years came from. That was one of the big questions I had as to why the tenure was five years. Was it just convenient since we had five members to do one every five years? But it does seem to be some value in not allowing, you know, an a mayor, a mayor to swap out an entire planning commission. Although I do agree with a lot of the comments that have been made as far as, you know, a reduced amount to allow more people to serve and/or less than 10-year tenure. And so I, I'm open to discussing changes. The, the one hesitancy I have is to do both where it's functioned, good or bad, for so many years, to change the number as well as change the tenure all at the same time. But maybe it's so broken that we have to do that. But I'm, I'm open to hearing ideas and discussions from other people. And one of the other options I have bounced around as far as tenure is maybe you make a couple of the positions a longer term and a couple shorter. So you might have, you know, two positions that are four-year, five-year, and then the other positions that are three-year. So then you get a little bit more fresh face opportunity often, but you also have some continuity that can extend beyond, you know, a mayor's term. Those are just some of the ideas that I've been bouncing around.
Thank you, Councilman Soderquist. Do we want to talk about the item separately? Should we talk about tenure first?
Yeah, my recommendation is you start with one and let's talk about that one item.
Good point.
Yes, let's, since Quinn started us, let's discuss that first.
Do you want to reread the code or do we all find with that, the current?
For the benefit of the public listening, I think we should just read it and then have our discussion.
Currently, right now, it says the number of terms that an individual may serve is two consecutive terms, so it'd be a total of 10 years.
Two consecutive five-year terms.
Yep, so two consecutive five-year terms. Other comments or ideas? Preferences?
So just a clarification on that, where it says two consecutive, does that mean if somebody did one five years and then wasn't selected for continuation and came back for another five years, that would be their limit? Or would they get 15 because they'd get one at five and then two at 10, two consecutives?
I read the limit as two consecutive five-year terms. So to play it out with an example, if someone were to serve two consecutive five-year terms, so 10 years total on the planning commission, and then take a break from the planning commission, they could come back and be reappointed. They just can't serve more than two terms in succession.
I'm always good at the what ifs. What if the city had a commissioner that was, had to leave town, move town, and they got replaced midterm? So they're, they finished out the previous person's term for two years and then happened to be reappointed for five, so that's a total of seven years. Do they get another three? Do they get another five? Are they done because they, they filled two terms, although one was partial? That's one of those one-off questions.
Yeah, that's a harder scenario, but I, arguably, that would be two consecutive terms.
Okay.
So they would, I think they would have to take a pause and then they could come back at a later point.
Because the five years is in the sentence above. It just says not more than two consecutive in the, in the final sentence there.
You could have a similar scenario where somebody leaves and someone comes in to fill a partial term. And I think we would still count that as a, a consecutive term.
Yeah, okay. But Mayor, not to convolute the conversation, can you hear me with this on or can I take it off? All right.
You can pull it off, please.
It's clear this way? All right, I like to be clear. I think the two have to play together with how many you want to have on the planning commission and what the terms are. If you're going to leave it with five or fewer, you know, then what's, what's the ratio? If you're going to have more people on there, maybe less of a term. Say if you had up to seven, which seems to be more consistent across the state. I think there was some research done by staff and I did a little bit more than, than that, and I found that it seems more logically or not, seven seems to be the magic number out there. It's more diversity, more, more chance for people to serve. But seven people going five years, maybe a bit much, but we might be enticed more public involvement if it was seven people, but they were three years. And then like Quinn was saying, some sort of staggering. So maybe there's a two every year and then maybe one on the third year or maybe set up at the beginning, so there's always, there's always two rotating off. I don't, I'm not that smart at math to be able to figure it all out. But I like seven, I kind of honed in on seven, and I like three years are the two things I'm putting together. But I'm trying to hear the arguments as to why, maybe why not?
So I, I did some research over the summer, actually. I've been kind of collecting this and found the same thing, that if it was three years, there, there was quite a few that had three years, but they would have seven planning commissioners. And Sherry, I don't know, I'm putting you on the spot, but have you worked with planning commissions that have seven people? Can you weigh in on the benefit between five and seven?
I actually think for me, the planning commission that I saw was the most, that was the most effective. It was five regularly appointed, but two alternates. And those alternates, you know, stepped in if somebody has to be gone or whatever. So, you know, in, in theory, there's seven. And all seven of them are always there. But then you've got the two alternates that if somebody has to be gone or if there's a conflict of interest, that's another benefit of having alternates or a larger number, because then you still get, you know, at least five that can hear and decide on all matters. But there's always room for somebody who needs to accuse themselves because of a conflict or whatever. Or there's always going to be somebody able to step in if for whatever reason a regular commissioner has to be there. So.
So in that case?
The planning commissions that I've worked with, that's when it's been most effective.
So in that case, all seven attend, but five vote, is that how it'd go?
Haley, can I jump in with a question? Would that work like maybe the alternate one, alternate two, their, their alternate their first year, and then they become a voting member their second and third year? And you kind of cycle them through that way?
Yeah, I've seen, I actually am a fan of that idea. Is that, you know, you start out as an alternate, kind of to give you a little bit of training, for lack of a better term, and a chance to observe all and participate in some. And then you rotate in as a regularly appointing member and.
So it's like a commissioner in training. We can send them off to get some training with whatever resources are out there. They get the experience in the room, plus they have a voice, maybe not a voting voice. And then the next year, they, they become more of an active role for two years. I like that.
Yeah, I actually think that's a really good idea, because if people, you know, Councilmember Albert's talked about wanting to have, you know, just anybody who's willing to serve. And that's a great thing, that's a wonderful thing. And then having alternates sort of sit in a training situation, it gives them the opportunity to go through that training and understand the legal and code parameters the planning commissions are up against and how their role differs from that of city council. And it's, yeah. I think that's a really good idea.
So in that case, would three years be enough or would we do four years? One year as an alternate and three years serving?
I've never dealt with anything that's less than five. I worry that three is too short, particularly if you've got somebody, because anytime you have an elected or appointed body, in my experience, the first year to 18 months is really getting your feet wet and trying to figure out like the rules and regulations that you're up against in addition to like. So I worry the three years is too short. But, you know, if that's the direction the council wants to go, we'll make it work and we'll make sure that we train our planning commissioners really well and yeah.
Go ahead.
So in, in my, in my research, it was, it was around three to four or five. If they had seven members, you know, there was, there was a handful at three years, there was a handful at four years. There was a few at five. So I think it's just, you know, they may not have had the same situation where alternates or, you know, exchanged each year, had one year of training, basically. So that might have been taken into consideration as well.
I love the one year of training concept, just because I do, I am concerned that, you know, there's a lot to learn as far as planning commission is concerned. And to have that year to get your feet wet, I think, and then come in, you know, ready to go. I would feel a lot more confident about just bringing someone new in if I knew that they had time to, to train.
Mayor, Lisa has put up on the screen the final page of a memo Sherry and I put together for the council's benefit, just to orient you to what's on the sheet. The shaded cities are those that have a population size similar to that of South Weaver. And then those in the bottom half of the chart are cities that are somewhat proximate to South Weaver. And then we wanted to include two examples that showed the extreme end on the term limits and the number of commissioners. So you'll see Salt Lake City with 11. And then Francis is a smaller town that has two-year terms and a bit smaller size commission. State law has no requirement about the size or the term of planning commissioners, and so it is something that's entirely within your discretion.
Thank you, Jamie. And the other, anyone else want to weigh in on this?
Blair does.
Sure, thanks. You know, I, I go back and forth on the, I mean, my, my initial gut response was five years is a long time. But you also gain, I mean, if, if we did it as an alternate, I would lean to go towards the longer period of time than, because the first year, depending on how we rotate off and how that gets, I think there's some, some benefit to, for the, I don't know how to say it without saying, you know, the guys, when, when the, the people have been served on there for a long period of time, they know the history. I mean, to know the history of your city and the history of the, the land that's being developed and the land and, and knowing what citizens have had comments on three, four, or five years ago makes a big difference in what could be decided in 2030. Just like the general plan review we, we're going through right now, if someone was involved, or we just finished, I should say.
Just like the general plan review we, we're going through right now. If someone was involved, or we just finished, I should say, feels like we're still going. But, uh, if, uh, someone is still involved with that. By chance, they will know the history without having to go read it, which they won't go do. So there, there is some benefit to that. And I do, I do like the fact that one individual person cannot put all the planning commissioners on there. I don't think that's right. Cause I like a diverse planning commission, because I think it, it adds to the planning commission. That is, I mean, we've had, I've had that discussion with Joe several times. I mean, there is some diversity that is needed on there. And, uh, and, uh, it, it brings out a lot of different respects. So i- if we go with seven, with alternates, I would lean for the longer period of time.
Would you throw a number out? Like what's longer, four years or stay five?
You know, I don't, I don't know how the math works out on four and how it rotates them out. I would have to sit down and do that with, with those alternates to see. I mean, for some reason, when you look at those numbers that were just up on the screen, it was, I think it was only one at four. Maybe fours for some reason in odd, or terms. Yeah, the rest of them are most, well, other than there's a six on there, which doesn't make a lot of sense either, but they're three or five. And so I'm just going, is there a reason for that? Um, without doing all the math real quick in your head and
I can speak.
Yeah.
For the reason that it's not four is that, so you're not tying a planning commissioner's term of service to the same length as council terms of service. Just so you talked about one person not being, or one mayor not being able to replace everybody. I think that's the reason it's either three or five, because that gives a greater assurance that that's not going to happen. If you make the terms of service different than the city council terms of service.
So I'd be more open to five years if I knew. What was five? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
We're not talking a one-year alternate and then five additional years after that.
Yeah, no, yeah, it would have to be one, that would be your whole term.
The term would come, the auxiliary as well as the
Yeah. And so, I mean, I think, and it goes back to both these issues get tied together, because we've obviously moved straight to number of years versus the, what the, what, what we, I'm lost for the words. But the total term, you know, and consecutive terms together, how many would we agree? If it's five? I mean, I still don't know that I agree with just one term. When we were talking three? If it's three years, I mean, we've had discussion of, is it three terms? So we're shortening it to nine years versus, I mean, there's, there's a lot of benefit to some of that, the length there. And, and you do have new members coming on almost every year, if we had seven people that way. And, and that can change the, and the, and the chairman and the vice chair. The planning commission chooses, choose that every year. And as new people come on, those things can change. And so I think you're getting enough change, you know, and then if someone does something, you know, totally wrong or inappropriate or whatever, I'm sure that's a whole nother discussion and can be modified, but.
I just put my cards on the table. I, I'm kind of like leaning towards the seven-member count commission for five years. And then, and that's the, they get one term, one term at five and they're done. The first year is an alternate, the next four is voting. But you got seven of them, so you're always getting a new one on, uh, as you work through that. To know one person serves more than five years or one term.
How do other council members feel, feel about that? So there wouldn't be two alternates? There would be two alternates.
Five voting members.
Voting members.
That's your seven. But you're always putting a new alternate on, you're always putting over that five years. Like, well, that doesn't work, then that doesn't work. It'd have to be seven years. So they sit there all the way through. You come in as an alternate, you're an alternate for two years. Or you have to have two go off every year. You become two alternates, come on, you have to have two go off to make it five.
Yeah.
So it's either one alternate a year, they serve for seven years, or two alternates a year, they serve for five. No, go ahead. That's just my, me doing math.
If you'd like, I know there's like discussions about how it'd rotate if the council would like, I could pretty quickly put together. You know, if you do seven with alternates, this is how you could rotate them out. If you do five, this is how you can do it. I could put together some different scenarios.
That would be nice, because doing the math up here is kind of
And, and Wayne, just, just to make another quick, I mean, I, I would agree with the, the first part of what you said, other than I still, I'm not opposed to two consecutive terms.
Okay.
And, and the reason for that is, is more, I mean, oh, right now, we have people standing in line. But five years ago, when you were put on the planning commission, there weren't five people standing in line, there was one. And if we don't have that, people standing in line and only have those people currently serving. I, I, I think you're going to tie the city's hands in the future. And, and I think that's a detriment. And I, and we can't look at just right now. We're looking at changing the code for a long period of time. And I, and I, yeah, I, I think we're, we're playing into current things right now and it, it won't always be current, because it hasn't been that way in the past.
Can I just offer a devil's advocate on that though?
Sure.
It's never been open before. It's always been picked by the mayor. I, I, I don't know that.
I, I don't know that I agree with that. I, I, I believe it's been put out, it's been on the billboard. Um, I, I wouldn't agree with that. I mean, Wayne, I even asked you when you were interviewed, correct? Yeah, it was put out there.
You were called up by the mayor?
Uh, no, the way it happened for me personally, oh, sorry, can't hear me. Way it happened for me was Tim Grubb was certain versus off and he was working out at the gym when my wife was working out. So she made me aware of it. I had to, I applied. So I came in, put in an application, didn't even know I was doing an interview. Next thing I know, uh, I was Mayor Long's, one of her first appointments, one of her first duties, she interviewed me with, along with the recorder and deputy recorder. Next thing I know, I got a call extending me the, uh, the invitation. And then I showed up to the council and the motion, it's kind of funny. She goes, I want to, I want to appoint Wayne on the planning commission. Do I have a motion? And they didn't know anything about me, didn't have anything in their background package. So I was like, okay, can you tell us a little about him? So it's improved the process, but yes, I had to, uh, I had to apply and put in an application and a resume and
Okay.
And it was published.
Uh, the only other devil's advocate I'm going to play again is just the two years of alternates to, to do the on-job training or whatever you call it. Uh, I, I can see that that would be beneficial for sure. Um, but on the counter side, we're thrown into council with almost no education really, except for a little bit at the very beginning of the year. So I, I don't think that it's um, un, uncalled for to do one year of training. I think that that would be sufficient, especially if we are able to dedicate a little bit more training to our planning commissioners with the help of Sherry and with the help of staff. Um, I would advocate for one year of training and then alternating into a full-time.
I'm not married to any idea. I like the idea of an alternate. However, we work that out, I think is, there's some room for
I would agree.
Working it out.
No. So it's a whole new concept to me tonight. So the alternate, I don't, it can be one, two. I, I just thought it was a great concept.
Yeah, I like that. So Sherry, if you could, um, put together some different options and bring them back to us.
Yeah, you bet.
We'll consider that. And then we also need to talk about, uh, the chair. As far as appointment of a chair or how long a chair can serve. I'd like to know the, the council's feelings on that.
I think the chair should serve for a year. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Petty.
It's just one year.
Would you like to elaborate on that?
Nope.
Just one year out of five. So hypothetically, someone's on there for their third year, they get nominated and appointed to be chair their third year. Their fourth year, they would go back and just be part of a voting member. And their fifth year voting member, year, could they come back and be the chair on their last year?
Sure. I think that they could serve more, just not consecutively.
Okay, so no more than one consecutive year?
Correct. No more than one consecutive year.
I got her to say it.
Mayor, that's actually pretty common, similar to how city councils will rotate to who the mayor votes. Year at a time. It's actually fairly common just for the chair. And there are cities where if you're vice chair one year, you become the chair next, then following year. But it doesn't have to be that way, but it is fairly common for cities to
Okay, thank you. Um, other feelings about that? The council like that?
I'm okay with that. Um, the, I do like the suggestion that they could come back and be it, because it, again, it depends on how many you have. If you only have five and they're on there for five years, one of those individuals may not have the organizational skills to be a chair. But they may be a great member of the planning commission and dig into everything and know everything. So I don't want to force you to have a year where somebody's in charge without the skills to be in charge.
That's a good comment. Uh, my, my concern is, uh, that members of the commission, and we've been dealing with this a little bit, the current one. Um, either they feel like they've got too much on their plate, or they've got a conflict of interests that they worry about being the chair with. Um, and then your numbers whittle down pretty quickly. Um, but maybe with seven, well, we, we still have five acting members, so. Um, that is my concern with just having them be able to serve one year. What if you don't have anyone that wants to stood up, step up to the plate the next year? Then what do you do?
Well, they could do one year on, one year off, one year on, one year off. If they need it. I mean, with that many members of a commission, you should find somebody who'd be willing to do it.
So just, just state that it's not one consecutive year?
What is one consecutive?
Sorry, Angie.
Yeah.
It was meant to be funny, that's why I did it.
We could let Jamie work on that language. He's good at wordsmithing that kind of stuff.
Okay, yeah, we'll leave that up to you.
I would be interested in your thoughts on whether the two alternates are eligible to serve as chair or vice chair. In other words, they would chair a meeting, but not have a vote in the recommendations made by the planning commission.
I think that's a good idea.
That would, that would free out more, more bodies to be able to serve in that position. That, that was my concern.
They're mainly conducting the meeting.
Right, right. They're not making the decisions necessarily. They're just running the meetings and
But they're in training and running the meetings.
Yeah. I don't know.
It's just going through an agenda.
Dave, did you have a comment?
Somebody in the fire and them being like, hey, there's an extinguisher back there.
That's what happens. If you're willing to do it.
Now Angie had a similar thought. She just expressed it in a different way than I would have.
Okay, um, so what is the consensus on chair? One, they can't serve more than one term, one year as chair consecutively. I don't know.
It is that More consecutive years.
Chairs serve for one-year terms and they cannot serve consecutive terms.
Okay, very nice. Okay.
Good job, Jamie.
All right, uh, is, is everyone good with that?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Blair?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Then the question of, what was the other question on that? Um, could alternates serve as chair? Do we want to go there or no?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, there's one for. One against? I didn't say anything.
I should qualify why I ask. David's been charting out how the rotation would work if you had commissioners serve two years as an alternate and then three years as active members of the commission or voting members of the commission. If they were allowed to serve consecutive terms, then what you would have is two years alternate, three years voting. So you could have individuals who are experienced in planning commission matters, but not uh, voting members of the commission under the scenarios we've talked about and that Sherry would be looking at.
Okay. So, uh, what does that mean?
That went over all of our heads.
What it would mean is you may have people that are not in the new learning period, but are alternate members for a year or two years of their service.
I don't think that's a good idea.
No, I don't like that.
So if somebody were to be an alternate for two years and then serve a consecutive term, the consecutive term would be as a voting member, not ever.
I see what you're saying. And that would allow them how many years total voting membership?
And maybe this is something where, when Sherry works through the scenarios, we try to make a proposal and, and figure out a way to have that be workable, um, if you do have consecutive terms.
Well, I, I think there's, um, there's some direction that's staff seeking for here, but they're not really asking. And, and it comes back to a question Haley and I were going back and forth. Does the alternate serve one year? And then the rest of their term as a voting member, or do they serve two years and then the rest of their term? So I think you got two scenarios there. I think you're advocating for one year of training and then they, they become a voting member. Not speaking for you Haley, but that's what I understood. And I kind of like that, although we started out, you know, the two and five. So I think you've got two options there. You need to probably play them out. And one might fall off to the wayside and one might, you know, one might stand out as, this is the preferred way. But I think if you work those options out, you'll come back with a recommendation and why.
Yeah, I'll put together pros and cons with each one that we come up with.
Can I just pose one comment about the alternate option? I'm just envisioning myself being an alternate. Am I going to be engaged really if I'm not a voting member? Am I going to really dig into everything? Or am I going to just go and sit and watch? I mean, if they're going to be there and they're going to be to every single meeting, they're expected to be every meeting. They're learning on the job anyway, so why not allow them to vote and give them an expectation to actually do the, the homework that's required? If you make an alternate, they can take a pass one week or one month or one development. And I, I just wonder if there might be some disincentive if you're not a voting member, but you're there every single week.
Yeah.
To that point, I've also seen an option with alternates in the past where everybody is considered a voting member. You could have all, all seven be voting members. But they rotate the meetings of who's an alternate that meeting in case somebody isn't able to show up. So everybody could vote depending on, it becomes a little bit more complex for sure, but um, if the concern is being engaged, there are, there are some ways around that. So that there, there are alternate voting members. You have seven commissioners, five of them vote each meeting, and you have a schedule of which ones would be the voting members throughout the year that rotates. So it doesn't become dependent on any project or any specific agenda item, right? It's preset of who's going to be considered an alter that, alternate that meeting. But then if somebody can't attend, of course, you know, they would just step in and become a voting member. But again, it's a little bit complex.
So
Sometimes too much.
What's going through my head over and over is keep it simple. And you can finish that however you want, Angie.
Got it.
If we get it to, I mean, I mean, I don't want it, I don't want it to discourage people either, and I want them to feel involved. And so I, I, there's, there's two, there's both sides to that coin. And I think we all need to weigh it out. And we're obviously not going to decide tonight, so.
I, I just like the idea of the alternate, that first year getting trained. It's like on-the-job training. So that's the engagement is they're there to learn and ask questions before they're then, you know, begin to, to vote and I don't think the city has done a very good job in providing the training in the past. And I think that might be intimidating to some of the general public out there who would want to do it, but don't know, don't know where the first thing to start. And so by, you know, I, I got tremendous confidence in our staff and, and where we're going and how they can get some in-house training. And then there's some curriculum out there. I think we can do a lot to instill that excitement and keep them engaged. So that, that first year is going to go by real well. I, I'm leaning more toward Haley. Two years as an alternate. That might be a little bit too long to be an alternate, but one year as a training, what's going on, learn it. That's my two cents as you work through that, that concept.
I've always seen alternates don't just sit silently, that they, they have a voice in the discussion. They're part of all of it. They're reviewing it. They just simply and so another element of engagement.
And I, just after interviewing those three candidates, the two that were not recommended, I can totally see them being at every meeting regardless, whether they have a vote or not, they would be engaged. I believe they would be.
Can I just throw out just one more piece of? Can I just throw out just one more piece of feedback that I've gotten? It's, the term is as long, the five-year term is what dissuades a lot of people from volunteering kids. It's just a significant amount of time. So just some feedback that I've heard. From people who have wanted to apply, but the five-year term is, that's a big commitment for people. Just something to consider when we're thinking about, you know, will we have people who will want to do this?
So we could have.
Sorry. Go ahead.
So we could have Sherry just give us a couple of options. If we had seven people, this would be. The rotation. If we have five people, this would be the rotation.
Yeah.
Okay. I like that.
Wanted to, I could even do that with different terms. Like if you wanted to see what seven people on a five-year term would look like or seven people on a three-year term.
That would be great.
Make it so, Sherry. Thank you.
Actually she's going to say she's going to have five on odd years and five on even years and they flop every fifth year that on a month that doesn't end in R.
As much as like incorporate, like when there's an extra full moon or something.
Wow. Okay. All right. So is there anything else with that we need to discuss? Staff, do you have your direction on that? Okay. Anything else besides those issues that we need to discuss?
There's method of appointment, but I don't see any reason for us to sway from mayor with advice and consent of council this time.
Okay. Does everyone feel that way?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Then we will move on. All right. Item number 10 is legislative review 2021. And I, I just picked out a few things from last week's meeting. And, and then Wayne or Dave, you can chime in at the end if you have anything else. Just so the public's aware, the Utah legislative leadership is very interested in accessory dwelling units, their ADUs. And, and just to give you an example, HB 82, which is a single family housing modifications. Representative Ward did a substitute bill. This adds, this replaces the old bill HB 82 and adds new language. The substitute bill would be, would mandate all cities to allow internal ADUs. Accessory dwelling units in any single family residential zone. The internal ADUs will be only allowed within the existing footprint of a home. They would require them to be owner occupied. The ULCT is checking to make sure. That they're excluding short-term rentals from this verbiage. This bill is designed to further accommodate affordable housing. The biggest concern of cities and, and believe me, there's a lot of concerns from cities is there are no regulations on parking yet. The ULCT opposes this bill. ULCT is the Utah League of Cities and Towns who represents our cities at the legislature. So, and then HB 98 is local government building regulations amendment by Representative Ray. This has not changed. This, this verbiage, this bill has not changed at all. I just wanted to go over the, the pieces of it again. An applicant developer can opt out of an inspection and review and engage their own licensed building inspector. This is a huge concern with cities for conflict of interest. City may require zoning review, but may not charge more than $200. It prohibits cities from requiring design elements, interior and exterior. The city leaders are really concerned about the long-term consequences of this bill. Just want to ask residents, if you're concerned about this as well, please reach out to Senator Ann Milner, Representative Kelly Miles. And let them know your feelings on that because that's a, that's a big one.
American asks, do we know where that's at? Is that still in committee?
So yeah, it hasn't come out of committee. Actually, I don't think it's even been discussed yet. So yeah, that's still coming up. Yeah.
Can I ask you a question on the accessory dwelling? You said owner occupied. Does that mean the dwelling on the lot is the home is owner occupied or the main resident is owner occupied?
So, so the existing home has to be owner occupied, but then they can have an ADU internally inside that home.
Okay.
But, but the ADU has to be in, that's what I didn't understand until you said it. It has to be inside the home.
Inside the home, inside the existing.
Like a mother-in-law apartment or something? Is that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I missed that too.
Yeah, not a separate building on the property.
Building. That's, I thought it was originally a separate building.
Well, that's part of it too. This is a substitute bill. So I think that there's some other language dealing with. Accessory dwelling units that are not internal, in the internal footprint of the home. Is that correct, Dave? Did you, did you?
No, this bill was just, just about internal.
Just the internal? Okay.
I know it started out not with that, but that kind of clarified.
That that changed. Okay. All right. And then SB 61 outdoor advertising amendment by Senator Sandal or Sandall. There's no change to this one, but I just wanted to give you. What it is, the owner could upgrade a billboard to a digital billboard. That restricts the city's ability to set curfews on lighted signs, restricts the city's ability to regulate brightness. And there's a concern by cities that many of the billboards are adjacent to homes and in neighborhoods. And so that would really tie cities' hands on what they could do. Regulate. Go ahead.
Do we have anything in our code regarding that curfew for lights? The reason I ask. Is this maybe something of concern for us as we get more traffic on 89, but I do know the lighted billboard over here on the east side. That I've had the residents tell me that that is ridiculously bright, right in there. I mean, there's no getting around that light. So this is a, a big concern. And if we don't have something in our code, that might be something we need to address for future.
We can double check what the code language is on our signs.
Yeah, we'll look at that. All right. Just, and just a couple more things. HB 76 firearm preemption amendments. This allows the state only to determine the regulation of firearms, avoids any local ordinance policy, et cetera. A city is not able to enact any policy that violates state preemption. And the ULCT also strongly opposes this, this amendment. So. Also note, the Commission on Housing Affordability is talking about changing the number of SB 34 medium income housing strategies. Cities required to adopt from three or four to four or five. So South Weaver City is required to do three, which we have done, and we would be required if this passes to do four of those. So that, that's what I have notes on. Dave or Wayne, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Who's first? She said you first, but.
Go for it.
All right. Yeah. She did, Mayor did a good job in overviewing the, the specific bills and not to repeat a lot of those. One of the things that came out of this to me that I highlight is the House of Representatives had their priorities. And one of their major priorities in bills this year is housing. Different types of housing bills. So those are the ones that are going to get the most attention and they're going to come up first for votes. I'm not going to say first, but they're going to get priority attention as they move through the house. Again, there's a lot of housing bills on there that I personally and the Utah League of Cities and Towns are not in favor of. SB 34 modifications is a, to me, that's an overreach. I don't like the idea of pushing more affordable housing on us. It changes our culture, it changes our character. It goes against South Weaver and what we want. So. I'll be vocal on that, but I would encourage all citizens to reach out to Representative Miles. Kelly Miles and Senator Ann Milner has suggested get their links and write them emails. Especially this year being more virtual than in person, they are. It will be more effective and there are some, in my personal opinion, some very poor housing bills that are being brought forward. And we need to, we need to speak up.
I agree. Dave, did you have anything?
Yeah, just to echo that, that it's very clear what the, what the state legislature is, is trying to attempt here. From, or at least a problem that they're trying to solve and, and they keep addressing it and looking at various ways to address it and. And cities play a role. But it becomes a difficult conversation when the state is trying to tell all cities of all sizes and shapes and character. The same rules to apply. And, and I think that we probably feel that maybe at the forefront. Some cities I think are very much interested in shifting to density. Understanding that for every additional home on a, on an acre of property is a financial benefit to a city. As well as just the market, the market forces that are at play. You hear anecdotally about friends or family or neighbors that. People that want to live in Utah or move to Utah or be close to family and, and just simply cannot find housing at a, at a price that fits them. And so there is a, a larger issue at play that the state is trying to address. From a housing perspective, and they're trying to, they're trying to, to force cities' hands in some ways. I think they're overstating cities' roles in, in affordable housing, although we do have a role to play. The other side of that coin is that there are other aspects to growth and development that they are trying to address. And they brought up in LPC that there's quite a bit of. Discussion about transportation infrastructure and money that would be allotted to transportation coming forward. So again, we're a little bit of a, of an outlier in some respects. We do have major state roads in our city. 84, 89, South Weaver Drive. But not necessarily the transportation level that the, the state is concerned about with additional. Public transportation and things like that. So there's a lot as far as multimodal transportation and alternate. Transportation option, active transportation, things like that, that, that is being discussed. And again, public transportation infrastructure. And again, we might be a little bit of an outsider to some of those specific conversations where we're not right in that transportation corridor for. You know, front runner and things like that. But that's the larger context that we're dealing with. And so I think that's just important to note that, that that's what we're doing. I also think it's important to recognize, we brought up some of these bills that. That the league opposes and that we are opposing and trying to actively work to adjust or to alter or to, to stop. There are bills that we support. We don't just go up there and, and kick against the state on everything. Yeah, but, but typically when they're doing something we support, then we, we don't, we don't bring it up and, and talk about it. But as far as a ratio is concerned of the bills we discussed in LPC on Monday. Of the, of the 12 that I wrote down, 10 of them were, were in opposed stance and, and that's why it gets attention. So. Know that there are bills out there that are good that we're supporting as a, as a league. But the ones that really need action typically are the ones that are, that have opposition.
Can I make a comment?
You bet.
I'm going to look right at the camera. If any of these bills tick you off like they tick me off, research people before you vote them. These people were voted in. They should be representing you and they're not. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Angie.
Is anybody else not getting those, those updates from the league?
I find them, but I find them in my.
They're in my trash. They're in my spam.
Yeah, mine's.
They go to your spam.
Oh, okay. I, I did before the session started specifically send all of your emails. So. If you're not getting that, let me know and I'll, I'll reach out again.
Yeah, Dave, I haven't.
Yeah, it's in my other folder.
I don't have it neither.
Okay. I'll double check that.
And just in relation to transportation, I heard some whisperings today and I know that the legislature is still talking about possibly bonding. For transportation, even though the governor, governor didn't recommend it with his budget. And part of that I heard today was possibly going to be a push for the interchange, 84, 89 interchange, which would be wonderful. We love that. So anyway, just.
Key of G or the key of A?
Nobody understood that at all.
I didn't know you were a musician.
I guess I thought it was the key of G or the key of A. Wonderful.
Oh, Wayne. Okay. So let's move on to reports. First of all, we have new business. I just, I have a couple of things and then I'll reach out to the council. Painted lines at the intersection of the Frontage Road and South Weaver Drive. I had a resident bring up that concern. There's left turn lane lines on the south and north side of the intersection. That are either not there or are lights and. This, this resident also says that all the striping along 2700 East is get, getting faded. So if we could have Public Works go look and see. What needs to be fixed there? That would be great. And. I wanted to ask the council if you want to continue to have a COVID report each meeting? Or if we want to have it once a month, or if you're just plain sick of them?
If we don't have them, does COVID go away too?
We can just ignore it, pretend it doesn't exist.
That's on the record. I second that.
Is that really?
That's saying a lot. She doesn't second my motion. So I mean, that's it. That's saying a lot.
It's true. I don't.
My personal opinion, the less we hear about it, the easier it is for me. But I am happy to have you report it to the residents if the residents feel like they want to report.
Well, I feel like a lot of people that are really interested in it, pay attention on the news and, you know. Might not necessarily go to council meetings to hear, but other comments.
I think if you put it in a packet, that's fine. If you want to bring out some statistics, but reading it every week, I think is.
Excessive.
Sombering.
Yeah.
Look, except for when it's good news.
Yeah, today was good news.
Or bad news when we were at 82 or whatever.
Yeah.
One of the worst ones in the county.
I know. I probably overstated that.
I, I think monthly is good. I do think there, I think there are residents who do like to hear an update for Davis County specifically and our city specifically. I think there is value to that. If you want to do it once a month, I think that that is sufficient.
Okay.
We do only have two meetings a month. So that's.
We do.
Every other.
You gotta choose at the beginning of the month or the end.
Okay. All right. Is everyone good with that then?
Yep.
All right. There's also one more I had. There's a resident reached out who's concerned about charging school and churches the transportation fee. I know the appeal with the Pleasant Grove is still going on and so it might serve us to wait until we hear that result before we talk about. Changes to our tough. But I was wondering if maybe we could have a tough update on funds spent and upcoming projects. And Haley and I spoke about this. And to ensure that the public is aware of how those funds are being spent. We just have an update at one of our, maybe the next meeting we have.
Sure, we can do that at, at any point. A friendly reminder that we talked about this. About this time last year, it was, it was closer to February, March. And we said we would like an annual update on tough funds before we get into the next season of projects. And so we have on our, on our calendar to provide that tough update of projects. Here in the next six weeks. So yeah, it's easy to do that, but we do have that on kind of an annual calendar to provide that update of projects and what's been spent before we do the next summer's worth of projects.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
So do you want that as?
We don't.
What type of report would you like that? Cause we can send that out as a report and publish that through social media or website? Or do you want that simply as a discussion item on the council agenda so that we bring that up?
How does the council feel?
I think it's a discussion item personally. Then it's there.
I think a discussion item would be good.
Okay. We'll put it on an upcoming agenda.
All right. Thank you. Other business, new business? Anyone?
I have some. And I, I meant to talk to Councilman Windsor before and I just didn't get a chance. So sorry if I'm stepping on toes, but. When you guys brought forward the planning commission code to us. It made me think if maybe with our code committee, still going through our uses and everything. Are we able to maybe fast track things like lighting and noise ordinances that we need to get to? Can we give that to you guys to bring forward? And kind of help fast track that? Or would the council, rather the committee do that when they get through with Title 10?
Wayne, do you want to speak to that?
I mean, I, I prefer.
I mean, I, I prefer you take those, again, we've talked about this, the hot button items that are simple. And kind of the no brainers like those that you're, I think you're referring to. And let staff bring them forward and let's change them. If, I mean, if they're, if they're simple to do unless they, we feel that they're something that need further discussion. And I don't know all the specific ones, but we've talked about, you know, a handful of four or five that are just basically simple changes. So.
I support that. I think that we need to address them. I mean, it may be convenient to do everything at one time, but if we know there's an issue that needs to be addressed. There's no sense waiting. Let's fast track.
Yeah, I, I like how you said that, Quinn. There's no sense waiting. If we, if we can just address them and get it taken care of.
So remind us again what those four hot buttons are. They talked about noise.
I have written down noise, lighting, signs, as in commercial signs. Parking. For, for density in housing and commercial. And fugitive dust. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, but that was another one that I'd written down.
We'll bring those up at our next week's code. And come back with a plan as to how we're gonna, how we're gonna address those as well as address the Title X that we're working on. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate your work on it.
And then I just had one other, I was just wondering, did we ever get that letter off to Wasatch Regional Council regarding South Bench Drive and the connection to Leighton?
Yes, we did have communication with them. We set up a meeting or at least reached out to set up a meeting so we could talk through it. More specific than just the letter. But yes, we have told them about that. We did not send the letter specifically because as we were getting ready. There was some additional information we were putting together on that. And that's when Wasatch Front actually reached out to us and said, we'd like to get together after the holidays. So I said, let's get together and we, we just need to schedule the meeting to, to talk through it. But so the short answer is no letter was sent, but communication is taking place. And we have told them that we've updated that and removed that from our general plan. And so they're aware. But we want to get together and, and discuss that and make sure they understand exactly what we mean by it.
Can we just have an update when that does happen?
You bet.
Council, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Haley. Any other new business?
Mayor, I got just one follow up on another hot button commenter thing that came up with. Planning commission discussion things, the general plan. I think we could do our planning commission a service. If we are not going to entertain any deviations from the general plan to tell them that, so they don't even entertain it. But if we are gonna allow them to do that, then let them do that. I know our general plan of twenty-fourteen went through the process and had a lot of things that some people didn't like. And we had people come forward expressing that. And I'm sure they would have been very offended if somebody said, sorry, it's on the general plan. We're not gonna do anything about it, you know. So I think we need to make a decision one way or the other. So don't have an outcry every time something comes up to the planning commission that deviates from the general plan. To just like, just give them some guidance. Cause right now I don't think they have any guidance from us. As to whether or not we're going to allow anything to deviate from the general plan. We may not. And if that's what we decide, that's what we decide. But if we would entertain it, then we need to also give them that type of instruction. So it's something we probably ought to discuss at some point. But I, I think it would be appropriate for us to give them some guidance.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Quinn. I, I would like to set that up for a discussion. Should we do that at our next meeting or?
Yeah, we can get that on an upcoming agenda as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, then we will move to reports. Angie and Haley, you probably will talk about this, but last week I attended a YCC. Mock city council meeting and it was awesome. Haley and Angie orchestrated this, but the kid, and the kids too. And they did a great job. They came prepared with. Arguments for and against fiber, city fiber. And one girl even dressed up like an old lady and, and said she was on a fixed income. And she was very upset about the whole idea of fiber. They just really did a great job. It was a fun evening and, and such a good experience for those, those kids to. To feel how that, how that is. It's so funny, the, the mayor was sitting up there and she's like, now what do I do now? And I'm thinking, that's what I think every week. What, what am I doing? What do I do now? So it was a great time. So thank you, Angie and Haley, for all your work with that.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. That was fun.
All right, let's go to Councilman Windsor.
Hey, I happen to have a daughter who's one of those advisors and she told me, one, one young council member said, my job was easy.
She said, she, he said Wayne's job was easy.
Yeah, when the mouth of birds, okay. So this job's easy. I shouldn't make it so hard. Okay, first off, I just want to report back, or at least give a shout out to the public, Public Works Group. There's been some, oh, call complaints, but some feedback in regards to lighting, lighting around eighty-nine, South Weaver Drive. And they got on it and I'm happy to report those lights are at three o'clock in the morning. They're shining bright. So can thank you for addressing whatever that problem was out there and, and the other ones that have been reported. So to the public, if, if you see lights out, just let us know, let staff know and they will get to it. And I just want to confirm that they did get to those lights. The code committee is. Is continuing to work. It seems like a recorded message, but I am so grateful and excited for the, the work product that staff has put forward. They presented us a matrix today that was very graphically appealing in regards to applying the, the uses. The new, the, with the definitions and the uses to the different zones. And now we're systematically going through and we're saying, well, that doesn't work there. That, that works there. And it's making the job a lot more easier. To the point where the committee, once we get to a point where we think we've, we have a recommendation. Rather than write it all up into the words, which is what we ultimately have to do. We want to present it to the public and we're trying to figure out how to do that. But we want us to present it to the public where here's the matrix that shows. You know, it's permitted use or conditional use or it's not at all. Here's the definitions. Here's the forecasted map. Now go take a look at it and tell us, did we get it right? You know, is that use work in that particular area of town? And if not, let us know why. And we're still trying to figure out the mode in which to get the feedback. If it's, if it's gonna be a form, if it's gonna be an open house or things of that nature. But we're looking for just feedback, not approval. We're looking just for the feedback so that we can incorporate it before it goes to the planning commission. And goes through the, the regular process. So we think the visual is gonna work more effective in communicating than writing it all up. But once we get the communication, then it'll all get written up and then that'll go to the formal process. So we'll have all the information. Matter of fact, it was even recommended that the matrix that, I don't call it the matrix. It's not the matrix. But the matrix that Sherry, I didn't call her Shari, Sherry. Sherry put together is actually gonna be put, made in, and the recommendation is gonna get incorporated into Title X. So it's a snapshot that somebody can go to and look real quickly. This use and that zone is permitted or it's conditional. Then they can go get the details in the, in the specific chapter. So real excited what staff's putting together, what they're bringing forward. And real appreciative of the committee and, and the role they're playing. We are making progress. It doesn't seem like it. Oh, we are making progress and we hope to have an end product here as soon as possible. That's my report.
Awesome. Thank you. I forgot to say also that we have our council retreat this weekend, so Friday and Saturday. And we'll be discussing big budget items and, and lots of things in that, in that retreat. And so we're excited about that. And Dave and staff has been working really hard to prepare for that this weekend. So we'll be down at the Legacy Center. Okay, Angie.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for mentioning the city council, mock city council meeting. It was very fun. And to those youth who have participated, they all spoke highly of it. And we had several parents that were able to attend and it was a lot of fun. So we are going to continue that throughout the year. The only other item I have to report is the Parks Committee meeting. The Parks Committee will be meeting next week. To discuss our bidding process for Canyon Meadows West. And make sure we have a timeline established. So that is my report.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilman Sotekus.
Mayor, the only update I have is on the Admin Finance Committee. You briefly touched upon it. It's gonna be a big part of our discussion this Saturday. We're pretty excited about some of the things we'd like to bring forward about some prioritized proactive budgeting as we move forward. We have a lot of things that are doing, going well in the city and, but a lot of needs that are still coming up. So we'll be discussing that in more detail about how best to do that. And, and hopefully make some good financial fiscal decisions.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Albers.
I have nothing new to report unless Dave has any updates on our website, but I'll defer to him. Put you right on the spot there.
So we are still waiting to get the final content migration. We've got the redesign as far as the look and feel. For the last couple of weeks, the company has been migrating all of the content of our current site. Over to our new site and we are a little bit behind schedule. We thought that we would be able to review that content last week and be able to make sure that everything transferred over the right way. We haven't seen that yet. They did send me, they, they did communicate with me and say that, that should be coming soon. But once we get that, then we'll be able to review that as staff and make sure that, that content has migrated appropriately. And that we have everything we need before it goes live. So we're on, we're on the final couple of steps. And, and so it's close, but it is a little bit behind schedule of what we, what we anticipated when we first started with this company. But still way far ahead of where we were before.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Councilman Halverson.
Just a couple of things. I, I think most of us are aware there was a planning commission last week. For those of you who did not watch the planning commission, there was a discussion item. On the, and about the development across the street. The developer wanting to change from moderate to patio. And well, they're waiting to see what that developer brings back as a concept. So. And I, on, as, along those lines, I, I probably need to apologize to the planning commission. Because maybe I should have stepped in as that liaison and, and I, I didn't catch it. I didn't even think anything of it. Cause that's usually when the chair and vice chair have been selected. It's been that week for, for years. And so I didn't think anything of it and I apologize for not doing so. The only other item I have is just to ask Dave to schedule a public safety committee meeting. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Dave, oh, you were taking, you're writing down.
Sure that I.
Yeah, you better write that down. Well, Jamie, did you have anything?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Mark, anything else?
Just a quick update on the audio system in this building during the youth city council. Mock meeting, we had a technician monitor the entire meeting to see if we had any more glitches with the sound system. We had a technician monitoring tonight, entire meeting. To try and see if we have the same problems with the mics that we had before. And we haven't had any issues. We don't know whether, so they know, they believe it was some type of electrical interference. What might have caused that? They don't know. We haven't, we haven't nailed down the issue. We're thankful that it hasn't occurred since that. But we have done two meetings now with a technician monitoring both the equipment downstairs remotely. And watching and listening to the meeting. So that's the update on that and maybe it's solved. If, if it comes back, we will have a technician monitored again. But I don't think we need to have someone monitoring at every meeting.
No.
In the future, but that's the status of that with the sound system in here.
The thing is, it'll work until they stop monitoring it and then I'm back again. So. Murphy's Law. Thank you, Mark. Oh, I did notice the, the mics were going in and out tonight. Did anyone else notice that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So hopefully they picked up on that as well. Sherry, did you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, Dave, we're back to you.
Thank you. The, the only item I have, and I think the council is very familiar with, with this topic. But the update is, according to the general plan on the Paul property. It identifies a base zone as commercial highway with the crosshatch that says a development plan and a development agreement. So that there would be a cohesive plan for all of that property and have a cohesive traffic pattern and look and feel and all of that. Well, typically when a development proposal comes in, city staff is charged with applying the city code. And kind of looking at the proposal and, and going through the code as a checklist. That's not possible on that property because there's not a code that applies based on that general plan requirement and request. To have the plan and, and development agreement as a, as a married couple essentially. So this week we met with the developers on that property that are, that are looking to propose something. And talked through what the process will need to be for them in order for them to, to move forward and get to the, to the ability to provide a preliminary set of plans. Again, typically staff can direct them a little bit. In this case, staff, staff is a little hamstrung. We don't have the ability to do that to the same level. And so the decision-making really lands with the city council as far as what will be allowed on that property. As, again, as you know, I'm, I'm kind of restating history in some ways. All to the, all to the report and to the question, as far as the process moving forward. What they need is essentially a, a zone. They need zoning so that code applies. Well, the goal with the tools that we have as far as a development plan and a development agreement. Is that that would create the zoning together. So where we're at with them is we're starting to put together a draft development agreement. That would essentially establish the rules of the zone, right? If, if that makes sense to use that term, so that the, the rules of what they can develop can be established. This is different from the, the lofts development timeline with the development agreement. I know that there's concern with that. We've changed that process. We, we bring development agreements with preliminary plans. That's how we do it. But that's when there's zone that can be applied. In this case, zone cannot be applied. And so they do have a development plan. They, they have a concept. I think everybody's familiar with that to some degree. They have revised that and done some additional work on that. But before they can move to preliminary set of plans, they, they need an understanding of what they can do. And so in the past, in the recent past, when we've had development agreement work. We have, we have had a council member or two act as a, as an ad hoc committee in some ways. To work with the developer to, to put pen to paper and establish that development agreement. Staff is beginning that work. The question that I have is, are there two council members or any council members that want to be involved at this stage? To put pen to paper on that development agreement and have a council perspective? Since ultimately that would go before the council for any type of, any type of approval. I'm happy to answer questions about that before anybody volunteers, if you have questions.
Any questions?
No questions, but I guess some serious heartburn if they want to put any apartments in there. And I don't think we want to travel down any road with any development agreement that shows any number of apartments in there. So I think we needed to take a step back and what message are we giving this developer? Cause in my mind, the general plan was to do commercial highway. It was to have commercial highway uses. And that's what we're working on right now, not to be putting apartments in there. So if we're starting to entertain a development agreement that considers that. We're just heading down another fight. And I don't want to go there. If you want me on the committee, then I'll be fighting anything on that development agreement that comes forward. Somehow we need to change the message around. We don't want apartments there, or I don't, I should say, I'll speak for me and I'll speak to a lot of the citizens. We don't want to see apartments there.
That message is understood and that message has been given to the developer. But as has also been discussed, they have every right to approach the council with. Especially with the rules that we've set with the general plan, the way that it is. That they, they are requesting the conversation with the council.
But if you start putting a development agreement together. Along those lines. I mean, I guess it's, if it's not signed, I guess, then it doesn't matter. It's just a discussion on that development agreement. And, and again, the tough part of that is, is it, it comes back to all of our opinion. Cause I prefer some of those apartments over a bunch of townhouses. Because I prefer some of those apartments over a bunch of townhouses in a way. I mean, when you look at the overall layout of it, I mean, they may be able to cluster things differently and give us a different look that, and so it's, it's so subjective. It's hard. I mean, it, it really is. I mean, I, but agree, I agree. It's commercial highway, period, in my mind. And that's, and that's the message I've conveyed. But I, yeah, that's a tough one. I mean, I, I'm open to, to discuss it. But I, I think, I think they're going to be fighting all of us in some way or one way or another on different issues. So I don't know.
Well, and they understand, they understand how this is a little bit different than typical development because of how we've outlined this in the general plan. And so they recognize that they're not entitled to anything, right? The zoning currently is agriculture. So if they brought an agriculture proposal, then, you know, we're talking different. If they brought even a, a proposal that was just commercial highway, we still would be having a conversation about development plan and development agreement. So either way, this, this has to come before the council to some degree. We have, we have tried to paint the picture for them of, of that general feeling as staff. I believe and I know that they are not necessarily following that, that guideline. And so at some point, the conversation has to take place about what, what is the zoning? What is the development agreement? What is, what is going to be allowed in that plan? And they need to know that before they can put preliminary together. It makes no sense for them, like you said, to put a preliminary set of plans together and go very far down the road if, if the end game is dead on arrival and the council feels strongly that way. So as staff, we understand that and we're trying to paint that picture. And as we work on the development agreement, we understand what you're saying. Are there, are there council members that want to be involved in the drafting of that before it officially becomes reviewed by the planning commission and the city council? It will follow the same process as a zone change. So as you think about this, the council's role in legislating land use, general plan is the first decision that council makes. The second decision is on zoning. We're essentially having that conversation right now about what's the zoning. And, and it's a little bit different because we're not just applying a zone. We're having a development agreement conversation about zoning. But it still would go through that zoning process as if it was a zone change. So planning commission and city council before approval.
Anyone interested in sitting in on those meetings? I'll do it. Okay.
I'm happy to do it.
Right.
Thank you. That's all I have to report.
Just a question on that, just so I make sure I understand. They are zoned agriculture right now, correct?
Yes.
And so they always have the option, if they want to, of just putting 12 one acre lots on there, building homes, 12 homes.
House per acre.
Yeah, so I will revise your statement a little bit. They could put 12 homes if it was 12 acres, but that doesn't mean every home would be on a one acre lot. Our zoning allows for some lot variability and some flexibility. But the overall density of the project is, would have to be agriculture landed at one acre lot minimum as a, as a whole, as an aggregate there.
All right, thank you. Okay, Lisa, did you have anything?
I do not.
Michelle, just give me a thumbs up if you're good. All right, thank you. Okay, if there's another comment then, I will now entertain a motion to enter a closed session as per UCA code 518 to discuss the character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.